I'd call this meeting of the Harriman City Council, July the 16th, 2019 to order. Before we get started, we'll have the prayer of a councilman Wright, followed by the placement of the flag.
Yes. To whom in prior, our heavenly Father, we are together this evening to conduct the current business issues of our city. We thank you once again for your blessings on our community and citizens, and we pray for those in need, that their needs might be met and that your will will be done in their lives. Bless those in attendance at this meeting, and may your Spirit guide us all in what we say and do as representatives of our people, for it's in Christ's name and prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call her up, please.
Darrell Pluck, Eddie Holly, Tim Johnson.
Here.
Keny Mee.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Wright.
Here. Motion to approve the minutes of the July the 2nd meeting.
Motion.
Motion for councilman Russell.
I second it.
Second for councilman Johnson. Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion approved. Need a motion to pay the bills? Motion. Motion for councilman Wright. Second for councilman Holly, councilman Wright. Motion. Councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Eddie Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. This time we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please stand, come up to the podium, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Mayor, councilmember Mr. Lawson here. That time of year again for us to do our back-to-school bash at Riverfront Park in Harriman. This will be our 18th year at the bash, along with giving out school supplies and entertainment for the young folks. We've also added the Superwoman, Middle School Superwoman Award, which is $500, and the title belt. We'd like to also ask you to follow us on Facebook, and so you'll find out that we start giving out school supplies already online. We've given out Chromebooks, iPads, backpacks as well. The bash is August the 11th at the Riverfront Park. In the past, you guys have supported us with a donation. We're here today to ask if you will be supporting us as well this year.
What amount on the donation?
The amount in the past has been $500.
What time does that start?
It starts at 6 o'clock, Riverfront Park, Harriman, August the 11th. Again, we'd like to invite you to business on our Facebook page, as well as the other things we do. We also have a blessing about going on as well in our neighborhood, where we're giving out canned goods, clothing, shoes, well, quite a bit, so check us out, Facebook.
Ask councilman Phil.
Nick Wilson, if we can give him $500 for an issue.
Motion for councilman Holly.
Second.
Second for councilman Russell, councilman Holly.
No.
Councilman Russell.
There's something we usually get from Mr. Lawson.
Financial report, and we got that ready.
Okay.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Eddie Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes.
Motion carries. Make sure you get that financial report to the front office.
I will. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? If not, we'll go into old business. First item, discuss and possibly approve final reading on ordinance 0519-02. Amending the Harriman zoning ordinance by modifying and adding various sections in order to establish an overlay district for parts of the city as designated on the attached map, which is also to be adopted as an updated zoning map for the city of Harriman, Walden Ridge. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion for councilman Russell.
I second it.
Second for councilman Holly, councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion.
If this passes, we gonna come back next meeting with the Senate committee and stuff?
What's...
Does that city council should add your rate or review committee of the five people?
Yep. You can put that on the first meeting of August, please. Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Eddie Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve final reading on ordinance 0519-01, an ordinance to abandon a proposed right-of-way known as Chestnut Street. Motion. Motion. Motion for councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second for councilman me, councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Councilman me.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion.
This is going back on the tax roll. Correct.
That would be correct. It will first revert back to the Wenzel Rise, and the owners have already been in contact with the owners of the Wenzel Rise, so that they can purchase the property and add it to the property, and at that point, it'll be on the tax roll.
And it is property that the street committees looked at and decided we wasn't using in that alleyway?
I know the Drac went out and took a look at it. I'm not sure if the street committee has discussed it or not, but the way it comes into Highway 27, and the way the elevations are, we didn't think that it would ever be of any use.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. We're going to new business. First item, discuss and possibly approve agreement with community development partners to administer the LPR F grant. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion for councilman Russell, second.
Second.
Second for councilman Wright, councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Wright.
Who put this on the agenda?
I said it'd be placed on the agenda. You actually approved by resolution selecting community development partners to be the grant administrator several months back. Our contract became effective yesterday for the grant itself, and so we could not execute the agreement until the grant became effective, so that's why it's on the agenda for tonight. But we went through the selection process last year, and this was the term that was selected.
Floor is open for discussion. And this is on the splash pad and the other things that we're looking at?
That's correct. Splash pad and some upgrades at Fred Davis Farm.
No other discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve agreement with Hart, Freeland, and Roberts to provide engineering services for the LPR program. Motion. Motion for councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second for councilman Wright, councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Councilman Wright. Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve agreement with Wiser Consultants to provide engineering services for the tap mill. Motion to approve.
I make a motion?
Motion for councilman Johnson, second.
Second.
Second for councilman Holly, councilman Johnson?
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion.
Is this one just on the sidewalk?
You tell us a bit about what this is.
This would be sidewalks, pedestrian lighting, and ADA compliance upgrades along Run Street, beginning at the Crescent Street intersection and extending up to Georgia Street, connecting into the high school.
So basically, from right here up to the high school, both sides of the street?
It will include both sides of the street, although there are some sections of sidewalk that are in good shape, and it's our intent to leave those in place and work around them for budgetary purposes.
Is the reason we picked that Kevin's budget with it was the best chance of getting the grant, both streets?
There was a couple of reasons. One, it did score well when the T-Di came down, and we looked at some different alternatives, so we did feel like we had a good chance of getting that funded. Also, some sections of sidewalks that through there are in pretty bad shape. And then lastly, the program is pedestrian-based, and you need to have a start point and a termination point that makes sense. You can phase your projects in, but each phase needs to end at a reasonable termination point, and in this case, the high school serves as that.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve resolution R0719-01, authorizing the city to submit a grant application to public entity partners for the purchase of a trailer-mounted arrowboard for use when blocking lane traffic. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion for councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second for councilman Russell, councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly. Floor is open for discussion.
Is this one just on the sidewalk?
You tell us a bit about what this is.
This would be sidewalks, pedestrian lighting, and ADA compliance upgrades along Run Street, beginning at the Crescent Street intersection and extending up to Georgia Street, connecting into the high school.
So basically, from right here up to the high school, both sides of the street?
It will include both sides of the street, although there are some sections of sidewalk that are in good shape, and it's our intent to leave those in place and work around them for budgetary purposes.
Is the reason we picked that Kevin's budget with it was the best chance of getting the grant, both streets?
There was a couple of reasons. One, it did score well when the T-Di came down, and we looked at some different alternatives, so we did feel like we had a good chance of getting that funded. Also, some sections of sidewalks that through there are in pretty bad shape. And then lastly, the program is pedestrian-based, and you need to have a start point and a termination point that makes sense. You can phase your projects in, but each phase needs to end at a reasonable termination point, and in this case, the high school serves as that.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, discuss and possibly approve resolution R0719-01, authorizing the city to submit a grant application to public entity partners for the purchase of a trailer-mounted arrowboard for use when blocking lane traffic. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion for councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second for councilman Russell, councilman Holly.
No, please.
I think we need a safety standpoint.
Councilman Russell.
Can you tell us something about this?
Yes, the grant program itself is something that we've utilized almost annually for four or five years now. From the standpoint of what the grant funds, it's anything that would make for a safer working environment for the employees thus reducing the chance of having a claim that come against workers' compensation policy that we carry with public entity partners. And so they will fund up to half the purchase with a cap, and the cap is based upon the premium that we pay for our workers' compensation insurance on an annual basis. We currently have an era similar to this in the street department, but it has been around for quite some time. It was about a year ago, I believe, that it was in use blocking a lane of traffic and was hit by a car. And while we have been able to still be able to utilize it some, it doesn't work as well as it did prior to that, so we might still have the ability to use that one on a more stationary basis, and then have this new one that we can utilize on a mobile basis. It would also be available to the fire and police departments, too, should they have a rack or some sort of event that blocked the lane of traffic. But ultimately, it's for the employee's safety, and when you think about that car that ran into the back of that era trailer that we were using at the time, which would be like this, it could have very well been the pickup if the era hadn't have been there and/or some of our employees, so that's the very reason this grant exists. Thank you.
Kevin, what's the count, the catch on this?
Approximately, we're looking at between $5,200 and $5,800 total cost, and then the grant funds would reduce the city's share by about $2,500.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Betty Holly.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Keny Mee.
Yes.
Sam Russell.
Yes.
Lonnie Wright.
Yes. Motion carries. The last item on the agenda, we can move forward with it, or we can wait till next month to address it. I don't know how council feels, if we all really been forward with the budget at this time.
Could I speak to that?
Yes, sir.
I noticed a few number discrepancies in Kevin's summary sheet and the budget. I think I would recommend that we postpone until first meeting in August, and if we would return those to Teresa, and once we get a chance to sit down. When I put real revenues and real expenditures in, I had to do some cutting to balance the budget, and Kevin has some numbers that are a little bit different than what I have in this version here, so that's why I'm recommending that we do that. Let us get together, be sure we're speaking on the same page.
I heard Will, the financial administrator, that you all agree with it?
So we're gonna see in the first draft, though, that we get some of these changes, so we don't have to amend what's down here, is that what you're playing with, Kevin? Well, at the workshop, my understanding was that the mayor had asked everyone to send to me any items that they would like to see changed on the budget, for me to talk with the council and try to get a feel for whether or not that's something that we wanted to move forward with. As well, there were a couple of things that council had referred to the various committees. Police committee, in particular, had several things that you had asked that they take a look at and make a recommendation on. And so this sheet here sort of summarizes the items that there seemed to be a fair amount of consensus among council on wanting to attempt to include in the budget, but they have not yet been included in the budget because council as a body has not instructed us to do so. We don't put them in there, though, we won't see until after the first reading. For all the big ticket items that we never did, lighting of the interstate, all that kind of stuff, hospital building.
My personal feeling is, we've had one budget workshop, and we sat down and discussed what we want to do, and then after that is when I reached out and asked you all to send Mr. Hounds anything you want to add or take away from what we have proposed. What I would suggest is that we have another budget set down workshop to go over what we're adding or what we're taking away, and get a straight number line before we run a budget in here to approve. But it's for you all to approve and not me, but that's what I would suggest. I think that you all still need a, when you're looking at this amount of money and what you're looking at doing, I think you still need to sit down and discuss it, and make sure that everybody's on the same page before we move forward. As we've said earlier, we're trying not to raise taxes, we're trying to keep the services at where we're at, and we're also trying to add quite a bit of stuff in this year's budget, so it's not like, in my opinion, it's not like this year, but we've done a little bit. This year, there's quite a bit of things to be done, so that would be my recommendation. You all have the right to do what you want to do.
And the next meeting is workshop meetings, so...
The next meeting is the first meeting in August.
No, that's the first meeting.
I mean, we can meet before the meeting. We come here 4:30 and meet and go over before we approve on the... But before then, you still, you need to make sure that your numbers are got with the city manager, for him to get with Dr. Curly to make sure that we're on the same page.
I guess, if I'm understanding correctly, you would like to see a version of the budget with these numbers in it, to see how it affects the overall budget, so that you can compare it to the one that you have. Presenting. And that way, we'd know what we're looking at. That way, it gives time for you and Charles to make your numbers match.
Yeah, this is a balanced budget that you have before you, but I think unless we're speaking on the same page on the project activity, as you mentioned, we need to probably take another look, be sure... It's kind of important that we get one done, because I can't order property tax notices until we set the tax rate. But I think we can possibly get that first reading the first week in August, that'll be plenty of time.
We'll agree with that. All right, we'll move into our next meeting. This time, we'll hear from Harriman City Manager, you have a report to give.
Well, I'll just note that in addition to working out the various agreements that you had on the agenda tonight, that you approved, so that we can move forward with a couple of these grants, we're also working on submitting paperwork to FEMA for reimbursement for some of the expenses that we incurred during the disaster that was declared when we had the flooding of the area. So that's another project that we're working on, and we have also submitted some additional documentation on the CMI grant to T-Di, and would anticipate that we would get a contract from them here soon, because I know that they want to get those funds obligated before the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September 30th. And likewise, if we move forward with rural development on any of our projects, and if they're able to provide us with some additional grant funds, that's going to be something that we're going to need to move forward with haste, because those are going to need to be obligated before the end of the federal fiscal year as well, which is September 30th, so we've got quite a few grants kind of hanging out there running.
Anybody have anything, city manager? All right, mayor and councilman remarks, councilman Johnson.
No, sir.
Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Wright.
One item, mayor, this past Saturday, Riverside Dab just had an end of the car show, which I'm informed was quite a success. I was out of town, wasn't there for it. But I mention that because its sponsors, especially Gerald Potter and others, asked me to publicly thank the city, the street department, the police department, and others for all the efforts that they put forth to make that event occur, and this is one that happens annually every July, and brings in a lot of out-of-town, as well as local people. They invite us there next year, if there's any way that we want to work with them and do things that they've been doing well.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Holly.
No.
Councilman me.
No, sir.
I've got two or three different things. I hope that you all, the ones of you that have social media or have Facebook, you've been watching the highlightings of Harriman that Mr. Humphrey has started putting on the Facebook, pushing some of our local businesses and stuff. We're trying to have a couple each week that we spotlight, but I want to thank him for the hard work he's done on that. They've been great, there's been a lot of good response. The ones that will be coming out next week, one of them is very interesting. It will show a little bit about what the city is doing about cleaning up properties. As I harp on every time I come in here, just about is clean up, clean up, clean up. We have finally put a crew out that is just cleaning up properties, so we have started some maintenance programs out there, and I've rode around the wood, and the properties are looking a lot better, and the people are thankful. But we're at least mowing the grass and cleaning the houses up the side of them, so they don't have to deal with everything that goes on with it. The last item I have, myself and Mr. Langley and Mr. Buddy Bullard went down today to Mid East. We've been talking to them for a while about surplus. They have two vans that they are surplusing, one has about 21,000 miles on it, and one has about 24,000 miles on it. We took Mr. Bullard down to look at it, to make sure as to what he thought. We are needing a couple vans for the inmate crews that we're getting. As you all know, we're going to Watford and picking up a crew, we're going to Kingston and picking up two or three crews every day, and we need a couple vans. Instead of buying new ones, I started searching surplus, and they're right here at home. They offered both vans to us at $1,200 apiece. Mr. Bullard said we couldn't find that anywhere, so I think that's a great deal, and I just want to let council know, I don't think it's... Kevin, do we have to take action on that, or is that something below the number that the department is?
Like the department had, can request that purchase through the purchasing department.
I think it's great, and I think, just to let you all know, two weeks ago, I went to our local housing authority. I knew they had some lawnmowers they was going to be getting rid of, some zero turns, and to give this crew that's cleaning up, and they gave us two zero-turn lawnmowers at a price of a dollar, so that saved us a lot of money, and those lawnmowers are already out working, and we want to thank Harriman Housing, their chairs here tonight. We thank you all for giving those to us. It's really come in handy, so we appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Hey, let me ask Kenny, Kenny's lawman got this big round here, would you tell the people how they can get on and look at past meetings?
They can go to our website, cityofharriman.net, and they can click on meetings from there. There's a couple of links to it, and it will take them into the city council page, and you can have city council meetings there. And they can also, if they want to watch the Highlight Harriman Series that we're doing, that's on YouTube as well, so there's a couple of ways that they can get it there. But the easiest way is to go to cityofharriman.net and follow the links.
You've got like 20 years of meetings on?
We do, we have a little bit more than that. The oldest meeting we have is from 1931. We went all the way back into 1931 and scanned those and put them in there, and as we have time, we're trying to archive the old ones, so they generally go back to about the year 1998, 1999, 2000.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jacob, I was gonna skip you and just run on out of here, but you have...
No, that's fine. I don't really have anything. I was just here in case you needed me to say anything.
South Course Rec Department, everyone's going good?
We have a tournament Saturday. The rec department has a cannon class at the community center on 2:00. There's free spots left for that, and let's see, Friday, we've got Pop-Up Park at the community center, and then Saturday, we're doing the movie in the park. If anybody wants to come, it should be a blast. It starts at dusk, and it's going to be a rear-front. And we're playing A Dog's Way Home. And that's it. Summer spectacular, July 27th at Riverfront from 4 to 7. And football practice started this week. Pretty much the report I was going to give, so...
Let me, I said I'd shut up, but there's a lot going on at Princess Theater. There was a couple of movies this weekend, so there's movies starting to show there. There's a big concert there. This Thursday night, a local gentleman at Graduate Harriman High School, which is in Nashville now, will be here playing Thursday night. What'd I tell you his name was, Sam?
Nick Hitman.
Nick Hitman will be here. So come out and support the Princess Theater. There's some new people that's working it, and it is, we see the turnaround, and we appreciate it.
And one other thing, too, to check the Ron County News, they had a real good article on that new production company that's coming to the Princess Theater, maybe for headquarters.
So nevertheless, it's been showing the movies.
Okay.
But they've been good. And before I shut up, if all you all wasn't here tonight, we was going to raise taxes, but since you've come, we won't raise them. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I'll favor that. Any opposed by some?